...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first thing that we're going to do is the board vacancy. Forrest chose to resign for now, so we are going to fill the position from now until the election in March. We have nine candidates, which is awesome. I love that so many people are interested in this convention. So I would encourage all of you before we start to remember that there's an election in March and you can absolutely run for that as well. So I hope that we have just as much, just as much...
Interest.
Thank you. I could not think of anything. First things first, we have put together a list of questions, but the board is going to review them quickly and just let me know if you feel like any of the number questions can and should be removed. We want to value all of your time. This is going to be a long meeting. So just want to prepare everybody first. So Kelly, you said number nine? Number nine can be removed. Okay. Do you... That's this one? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
So anyone else have any? You can probably go four. Jen, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Because I think that'll be answered another once.
Yeah.
Okay. Four.
Four, hello?
Can you just... I can't hear you guys.
I'm sorry. Four and nine are going to be removed, the fourth and the ninth, right now. And we're just looking to see if there's any other ones that we could remove. And if you want, then the two of us can go back if you guys don't want to.
Yeah.
All right. Technically, number two can probably be explained in number one. So we're going to combine one and two?
Yep.
Okay. That? Okay.
Yep.
Honestly, we have...
Five and six, you'd be one has one question.
Five, six. Okay. Yep. So we will combine that. All right. One.
Which ones? Five and six are going to be combined into one question.
So that's going to be three. All right. You good with that? So we have one, two. Okay.
Eight, I don't think is...
Kelly wants to keep that.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It's better.
You good with that?
Yep.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So... We are going to start with Maria Brown. So you can come to the podium, please. And all of the questions will be the same for every candidate, so if you could just... In the same order. Okay, so first, Rhonda, do you need them to introduce themselves the way they would if they were doing public comment? Or can that be wrapped in?
Yes, yeah, just that way it's on camera.
Okay.
Okay, would you like us to say anything about ourselves or just introduce us?
You can just give the, like you were speaking at public comment first, and then we can get into questions, and I'm sure we'll get that.
Okay. So Maria Brown. Superintendent President. Is that good enough? Is that all you have?
Is that good, Rhonda? Okay, it's fine. All right, perfect. First question. Can you briefly share your background and experience, highlighting any skills or expertise that you believe would make you a valuable addition to our school board? And then your motivation for running at this specific time? Please.
So as you all know, I was on the ballot last year, Kelly and Jen, and I was the third one in. It was, you know, a great experience to get back into the field. I have served as a board member for 14 years. I also worked here at the school in all our RSCU 21 schools in some capacity. I have a great in-depth experience as a board member, which involved negotiations, budgets, hiring, building of the high school, building of SSTEs. And I am a seasoned board member that I feel would really complement the board at this time. My motivation is always kids, students. I see a lot of kids I know, parents, they're leaving here. The staff is leaving. The retention, to me, is utterly important. I want our kids to get their education here with all of us. And however we can do that and work together as a board, we really need to put that as a priority. We've seen a lot of administration flex for good and maybe bad, not so good. We've also lost a lot of good teachers. Yes, some moved on, some have grown, but I think we really need to work on retention. So that's motivation. The proficiency of our students in our schools, I went here, fifth generation, five generations in my family, we had great educations. And our kids did wonderful things throughout our family and our friends. So I would like to see us continue to work on that, but more aggressively. I think we need to set measurable goals for our superintendent, who's doing wonderful, by the way, as the superintendent principal at the moment. I think we need to really work as a team on how, and we did a lot of goal setting when I was on the board, and we sat together, not necessarily in a meeting, but at a dinner. And we really grew a relationship with the administration and got to see them from a different side as well as they got to see us. And I think that needs to happen more, and I think that will also help with retention and growth and proficiency at the school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
So 100% transparency. No surprises to our community ever. We all need to be on the same field, same level. We need to know what's going on, whether you're a parent, a staff member. Everybody needs to be together. But I think for me, and when I ran last year, I was very adamant about community. We're a whole community, town, school. And I feel that we have, as a team, as a board, that we could really work on engaging our parents, grandparents, community members. We have a lot of resources. I know a lot of retired teachers that live in Seabrook now. I've met a lot of them that would love to come and volunteer. And I think reaching out, outreach, community with staff, administration, students, we need to do more of what we used to do, was a lot of forums. You know, there may be topics that people are really concerned about. And have the forums, have them come in, share their concerns instead of on social media or, you know, with a friend next door, "Come on in, let's all get together on this." Because that's how we learn and grow as board members. So I really think that would be helpful.
Great. The next one is on disagreements. So how would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with a particular issue that you strongly believed in? And then the second part to that would be, how would you handle a disagreement between two board members?
So I have always felt that we are a board, but we also are individuals. A lot of times when people come into the boardroom and there's maybe four or three board members sitting there, because things do happen. However, I feel that we, as a board, we all are going to have different opinions, and without that, we really wouldn't grow. So I think it's important for, say, for instance, Jen and Kelly, to be, you know, okay, how are we going to handle this issue and work together on it? I think that everything should be done here in the boardroom. And I think if we do do that and we work together that way, that we can really accomplish and to agree to disagree at the end of the day, but to keep the kids focused and first and foremost is, I think, the solid.
Thank you.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
I think the best quality of a board member is to be kind and open, never ever have a closed door, always listen, be there for people. I know many times, and I say this a lot, I would be in the grocery store, and I'm sure you've all experienced this, my ice cream was soup when I got home. Because whether you can help or not help, I believe you should listen. You know, always be a good listener.
How important do you think it is for school board members and administration to be all on the same page regarding all aspects for what is going on within the school?
There is no, there is, it's 100% needed. If you're not on board, if your board is not on board, every board member of your administration, I'm not saying to go and sit at Brian all day and be there telling him what to do, because I feel we have a fine line and not to micromanage. I do feel, though, that it's important to have a relationship so that if any one of them feel like they need to share something with the board, they can do that and feel okay with that. So very important.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
Well, it's, the biggest issue, and I said this earlier, is the educational piece for our children. They've suffered greatly during COVID. However, and I speak of this often, so it's no surprise to any of you who probably heard me say it, our sister school districts are doing so well. And they went through COVID too. They're doing really well. Their rankings are 20 or above. I'm not going to say what ours is, but it needs improvement. And I want to know and how I feel the superintendent can bring our school and our children to that same place, because I know we can do it. I think that's the biggest concern, and a little piece of it, but a big one, is the behavioral. We have to control what's going on in the classroom. If the teacher can't control what's going on, she can't teach. So I think working together to help our kids in that aspect, too.
Great. Final question is, so we have one meeting a month as a school board, but while sitting on our board, we also have a joint board that meets once every other month. But in addition to that, we also have committees. So we have policy, we have budget, we have operational, and there's other things that admin or teachers or whatever will ask us to be a part of. Do you think that the time commitment is something that you feel comfortable with?
So during my 14 years and prior to being a board member, I would really have to tell you that there was probably three nights a week after I worked all day, that I would either be at SST or went to kind of for the building projects, meetings. Joint board, to me, is really important. And Christina, I know, I had spoke about before, when they gave the additional contract to the superintendent, you were there. And I know people can't always be everywhere, but things like that, especially for our school, everybody's voice is important, all of you. So, and important to the superintendent, too, to know what Seabrook's looking for, because the other districts are all there. So I would hope that, and I would be able to make all of them, but I would hope we all can, unless obviously medical or something like that, yeah. A big commitment, but it's worth it.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Richard Curtis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good. Your name and address, Rhonda, or just Seabrook or just...
Everybody knows where I live. My name's Richard Curtis. I live across the street. 269 Walton Road.
Perfect. Okay, same question. So can you briefly share your background and experience and highlight any skills or expertise that you believe would make you a valuable addition to our school board? And then your motivation for running for this interim time?
Okay. My background goes back to my time spent as a student in public schools. I came from a broken and then blended family, and I fell through the cracks. I quit high school at 17, got my GED and joined the Army because it was the best thing I could do for myself at that point. I don't want to have another kid go through that. I managed to graduate college with a bachelor's degree at the age of 41. Lo and behold, I'm still a fireman. I will be, talk about transparency, I work for the town, I'm a firefighter, paramedic. I've been a union president. Just so I put that out, there's no question about it. I do have a background, I served as a medic in the Army, and I have a background of adult education in Boston, particularly with young inner-city adults. I spent a lot of time developing curriculum and had, I would say, very good success rate of getting these young people employed and off of public assistance and into good careers. And I'm proud of that. My motivation is sitting over there on the other side of the bookshelf. She's a fifth-grade student, and she's my daughter. And I've spent a good portion of her school years as a single dad. And she's the reason I'm here.
Thank you.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you engage with the community during your time on the board?
Transparent communication goes along with, I know you're going to ask me, what's the most important quality? And I'll tell you right now, it's integrity. I don't care what position it is, whether it's public service, private industry, it's all about being honest, having candor, being a person of your word. As far as open communication goes, I'll have an open email. People can come up and talk to me at Market Basket, that's fine with me, as long as I have time. And I'm willing to let anybody know anything they want to know that I have the information on. If I don't have enough information, I would say, "I'm going to get back to you, but I can't give you an answer right now," whether it's something, the answer you want to hear or not. I'll be honest with you about that.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with something that you felt strongly about? And how would you handle a situation where two board members were disagreeing?
So I would hope that any decision, I actually, you know, I'm new at this. This is not something I have done before, unlike Maria, who is a friend, and our kids are friends. So I went to the website of the National School Board Association, and they give a list of guidelines. My favorite thing in there is that our decisions are data-driven. So provided that we're working with data, hopefully empirical data, that's peer-reviewed and not up for contest, that it's proof. If there's a disagreement, if I don't agree with what the board decides, I'm going to back up the board. I will get my, I'll say my piece, and if it passes and I disagree with it, I'm backing the decision 100%. We have to be unified. 100%. What was the second part of the question?
How would you handle a disagreement between two board members?
Disagreement between me and someone else or two other board members?
It could be either. So if you have a preference for you want to...
Civil discourse rules the day.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
Integrity.
All right, we'll just move on. You good with that? Do you have any?
I could talk more about it if you want to, but that's my answer.
You don't have to. How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page regarding what's going on in the schools?
That's a pretty broad question, to be on the same, the school administration and the school board to be on the same page. Again, I'd lead back on data-driven information and a decision based on that. It's great to be on the same page. Being on the same page doesn't necessarily mean agreeing, but if the school board and the administration comes to a decision together, we have to also be unified. And we have the opportunity to debate and discuss, but divisive politics, in my opinion, are killing this country in a huge way, and I will not engage in that.
Thank you.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
The biggest issue facing the school, based on what I've seen, is, and I have, my degree's in emergency management, I work in public safety, for me, the answer's almost always going to be safety. And having an environment that promotes, facilitates learning, which is what this is supposed to be about. I'm a science geek. I can tell you that I would love to see a curriculum that's rich in civics, government, understanding how government actually works, not on what you heard on social media. STEM, absolutely, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And personally, I would also like to see people, I've told you what I do for a living, and I understand the problems in this town. My history in this town goes back to the 1970s. My dad was a minister at the Rancho Church. I've spent a lot of time here, so I'm not in, totally new. I would love to see a robust DARA program. I think mitigation now is going to help us prevent some of these horrifying problems that I've helped people with in the future.
Thank you. Last question goes to time and commitment. So the school board has one meeting a month, and I already said it, so eventually...
The answer is yes, I will be here.
Yes, time is up. So there's a lot of things involved, policy committees, budget, and it's all distributed between all of us. So do you feel confident that you can make those commitments?
Yes.
For the time?
Yes, exactly.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Bethany Roy. All right, Bethany, so just to clarify, do they need to introduce the folks? Why I'm calling their name?
We already introduced them. I think you can...
Okay, we can just go right in?
Yeah. Their name is recorded, so the people watching this know who's the only residents.
Okay, Bethany Roy.
Okay.
All right, Bethany, thank you for coming. First question. Can you briefly share your background and experience, highlight anything that you think is important for skills for the school board, and your motivation for coming out to it?
I'm a project manager for the university system of the Hampshire, and I work with people on a regular basis. I work with vendors, I work with a number of different teams and groups and organizations. In addition, from a volunteer perspective, I work as a coach for soccer. I also been on a, I'm on the board for the treasurer, as a treasurer for the soccer board as well.
What's your motivation for coming?
Standing and speaking is not my...
No, totally fine. Also, you've been sitting and listening too, so it's...
I actually sit and talk all day long to people on meetings, and I'm actually leading the meetings, so it's a different experience, standing up, you know, instead of being on a video cam, I'm sitting down.
Totally fine. So what is your motivation? What do you think?
My motivation is to get back, basically, to the community and to be able to, you know, support the town and the kids. I'm all about supporting the kids. I volunteer a lot of the time. The school's doing field trips and fundraising and soccer, soccer fields, so I am all about those.
Thank you.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
So, yeah, I mean, communication is the number-one skill for a project manager in trying to explain, you know, whatever the particular situation calls for, being open and honest about what you can share for information and being able to publicly, as public as it can be, to distribute that information.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with something you felt strongly about? And then how would you manage a disagreement between two board members?
I would hope that everyone listen, listen to each other to share their point of view as an open and honest communication. And then, you know, if there was disagreement, you know, to go with whatever the majority of the board supports.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
Jen, I'm going to actually say it best with the integrity, honesty, and trust.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page about what's going on in the school building?
Can you say it louder?
Yeah, sorry. How important do you think that it is for admin and school board members to be on the same page about what's going on in the school?
I would hope that there be open and communication between the school and the board so that there's a partnership involved with the two organizations and be able to share a unified approach to things.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
You got to speak up if the fan is blowing.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
So I have a daughter that just moved into the high school, and I've seen a gap with the transfer into the high school realm of education and being able to provide additional support and be on the same level as all the other schools around us. There is definitely a gap in the educational level.
All right, and the final question is about the time. So the commitment is one night a week, or one night a month for the board. It's one night every other month for the joint board, but then it comes to committees, policy, budget, operations, things like that. How do you feel about the time commitment when it comes to being important?
I would support the, and be prepared to organize my time and prioritize it so that I won't be here.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Cassandra Hashem. Cassandra Hashem? Can you speak a little louder? Cassandra Hashem? Can, what? I think so. Do you feel like the microphone's working? Is it working? It is working. Can you briefly share your background and expertise, highlight any skills that you think are important for this interim school board position? And then tell me your motivation for wanting to join.
So I feel like my motivation and my personal experience are collaboratively together. I grew up in a similar nearby community, and I was a student in a regional school district. I grew up in the town that was considered to be the underdog amongst the other towns. I always felt this desire to show that I could be more than what was expected of me just because of where I lived. I hear that in this community. I heard it two minutes ago, and I've seen it with my eyes and parents that I've talked to. I feel like that motivates me to be a part of change and providing more equity amongst our school districts specifically, and making sure that as our children are moving from our middle school to our high school, that there's more equality for them and they're not starting this new adventure one step behind everybody else. Professionally, I previously spent 12 years working as a nonprofit social worker. I worked out of Hable, Mass, and served most of the lower-income and struggling communities in the Middlesex and Essex counties. The last four years of my experience working there, I was the assistant program director overseeing several state-funded contracts where there was a significant need to balance quality of care and fiscal responsibility. I feel like that professional experience could help me as a board member, considering like that professional experience could help me as a board member considering the needs of our staff and students, as well as obligations we have to our budget as initiatives are moving forward.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
So, I think that an important part of being a board member is balancing transparency with the community, as well as ethical professionalism. So, there are meetings that are open to the public, and there are closed-door meetings, and I feel like that occurs for a reason. So, if I were to be approached by somebody in the community, and there were things that were public knowledge or questions, I would answer the best to my abilities, but I would also encourage people if they're coming with concerns or struggles that they're having to come to a meeting and approach the board as a whole in order to share their grievances all together and not speak outside of the forum on behalf of the board while I'm independent.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with something you felt really strongly about? And then, how would you handle a disagreement between two board members?
So, I think all of our personal experiences shape us as individuals, and I think that's important. But I think we're also, everybody's here representing the community. So, if there was a majority opinion on something, even if I personally disagreed, I feel as though my personal disagreement could be put to the side to work collaboratively and collectively with the team and put forth a united front in presenting to the community. If I had an issue with another board member, I would confront them directly, privately, not in a meeting, and just talk about difference of opinions, or something that perhaps I didn't agree with, or felt that was off-putting. If it was two other board members, I would trust as adults that we could handle this independently, but if there seemed to be a need for mediation, I feel as though, given my background, I've done a lot of family therapy and mediation amongst individuals, and if they were willing and wanted some support in overcoming their disagreement, that I would be willing to help with that as well.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
Involvement, passion. I think that being invested in this school district as a parent, I think, is really important. I feel like who's better to speak for the community and the students than parents of the community and the students. And I think that feeling that, that passion and that commitment to our schools is, is really vital in decision-making.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page?
I think that in presentation purposes, it's very important. I think there's going to be disagreements or difference of opinions. You know, administrative team is coming from it from a different perspective than school board, who is kind of running that line of being supportive to the admin, but also being part of this community. I think that in the long term, ensuring that everybody comes to a mutual agreement is very important, but I think that there's a lot of work that goes into that, and there are going to be times where things do not align perfectly, but compromising and kind of coming to a middle ground that meets everybody's needs as best as possible.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
Equality. Equity, equity for the students. I feel like there is a wide range in this town of diversity, socioeconomic status, students' abilities, and trying to offer as much support and assistance as possible to close some of those gaps and provide the same education and give the same opportunities to every student that walks into that door, as well as previously stated, when they're leaving our doors and heading off to Winnicott and ensuring that they're in an equal position as their peers at that point, too.
Okay, and the last thing is about time. So, the, we, I already said all the things, but if you have any questions about that, I can reiterate the same-
I don't. I have three young kids, but I also have a very supportive spouse who's home in the evenings, and I currently am a stay-at-home mom, so I am also available if there were things that needed to be done or met during the school day.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'm just gonna say, I'm really glad that I am not the person who's gonna have to make this decision at the end of the evening.
Wonderful.
Hi, so I'm Jessica Karen, and I'm the super president.
Thank you. Jessica, can you briefly share your experience? Highlight any skills that you think are important for the position, and tell us about your motivation for my-
Absolutely. So professionally, I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker. I've been in the field for about 15 years. You know, early on in my career, I also worked with underserved populations and youth and families at risk. That's really been my, my expertise and my specialty has been children, youth, and families. I started off my career in Springfield, Massachusetts, working with really urban, and at times getting involved children, and I often found myself really collaborating with the schools to get those students back into the building. And I recognized very early on that just building a connection with one teacher could really turn things around, even for kids who are really involved with other systems or involved in juvenile justice. So, it was really neat to kind of watch students go from failing to now being able to play a sport because they've raised their grades high enough. As I progressed in my career, I started to become a director and manage grants. I also collaborated with several schools in the North Shore to provide a student assistance program within their buildings to support students at risk for mental health issues, but also substance use issues. My most recent involvement with public education was being the director of health and wellness for another local school district, where I really was building up the multi-tier system of supports for behavioral health wellness, which, as far as I know, is still codified into state law. So, I had to work closely with our community, our stakeholders, and the state to really think about how we build that up in a sustainable way, and in a way that made sense for our community, their needs, and kind of where the community was at in terms of behavioral health wellness. So, I think that's, that's sort of the lens that I bring. I've managed lots of grants. I've done project management and things like that, all with a focal point of supporting youth and their families, but again, like I said, most recently, within public education. Personally, I am a single mom of a fourth grader, sorry, and I, I see that there are, excuse me, there are a lot of strengths in this community, and we have a lot of resources, and I think there's just such a great opportunity for us to really leverage all of those, to really, again, to the point that someone else is making, I'm sorry, I'm getting so emotional about this, but just the opportunity that we have to really make sure that every student is supported in our community. My daughter has a lot of friends across this town, and they all come from different walks of life, and I think that's, it's so special to me. And so, I'm motivated to see how we can continue to leverage those things. And I think my own personal experience, school was a very protective place for me, and I'm very lucky for that, and I want to make sure that we're ensuring every student in our buildings has that. I don't know where I'd be today if it wasn't for that.
Thank you.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communications and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
Yeah, so I think that's just so, so important. Again, in my previous job with another school district, I stood up a district community leadership team meeting. We would meet on a regular basis, so that we were being super transparent about where we were trying to go and how we were going to do that. I felt strongly that we really needed parents at that table, and we needed their input to really make sure that we were doing best by our community and where the community was ready to go, right? Because readiness plays a part in all the changes that we're gonna make. So, I think that that's very vital, and I think being collaborative and being able to talk to all the stakeholders and understand their views and their priorities is really important.
How would you feel if the board disagreed with something that you felt strongly about? And how would you handle a disagreement between board members?
Yeah, so I've, I've always said in meetings that I'm in, if I'm the smartest person in the room, then we're, we're in a lot of trouble here, you know? So, I feel like it's just really important that we be able to acknowledge that I have my own blind spots to things, and so I think it's really important to really have that open dialogue to fully understand. I am gonna be a squeaky wheel if I think it's gonna impact child safety, or it's, you know, deviating from our mission and our values. I think that's where I would be a squeaky wheel with folks, but at the end of the day, you know, we have to be collaborative, we have to make votes. And so, I would, you know, put those pieces aside and understand that, you know, there are, everyone has their own expertise at this table. If there was a disagreement between two board members, again, I also am a, you know, previous family therapist, couples therapist, disagreements and conflict don't scare me. I think that's where we really make a lot of progress. That's where things get exciting, and when we're about to make changes, when we start to experience some of that, differences of our opinions. So, I think, again, it's really about starting the conversation where, where we have our common ground, and then kind of moving from there.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
It's so hard to pick one, but I, so I'm gonna sneak in two, but I think being collaborative and having follow-through is really, really important. We have to do what we say we're going to do. We have to follow through with that, and we have to be collaborative with the various stakeholders. You know, we have to be collaborative with our, with our school buildings, with our community, and other stakeholders.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page about what's going on?
Yeah, so I think that's super, super important, and I think that we have to have a dynamic with each other where we can be open and transparent, right? So, it would be terrible if there was a major situation going on in a building that the school board wasn't aware of, right? And we may have differences of opinions on how we address those things, but I think that has to be really discussed internally, so that we can be a united front with our community, because we are going to have different perspectives, right? Someone who's in the building every single day is gonna have a really different idea on how to solve a problem than someone who, you know, is not in the building every single day.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
So, you know, this is where I show my bias, right? I'm a social worker. So, for me, it's really the health and safety of our school buildings, because for me, if those things are going very well, it opens up time and resource to address other areas where we can grow in terms of our quality of our education, vertical alignment, all those things. If health and safety is not really fully addressed, and we're really being bogged down by student behavior, that takes out so much instructional time for our students, and it's, and so much time for our teachers. You know, I think, you know, there's research out there, but like every discipline referral is at least seven minutes of classroom time lost at the end of the day. So, for me, when we can address those things and do those things brilliantly, then we have the resource and the potential to continue to tick off the other things that we really need to leverage to be innovative and making sure that our students are really prepared for when they, you know, progress on to Winnicott.
Last one, time. So-
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I'm a single mom, but I, again, in the past, I've participated in many, many board meetings for another school district, which is half an hour drive away. So, you know, I, I feel confident I'll be able to commit to this. Again, my daughter's really well-connected in the community. We're always able to find, you know, sitters or, you know, SaaS, for example, is a, is a program that we really leverage and we're grateful for. So, I would be prepared. I work remotely, so there is some flexibility in my job as well, in terms of being able to attend the meetings that would be expected of me.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Michelle Perkins.
Hi, I'm Michelle Perkins. Just seen if you're awake.
Good. Michelle, please share your background, expertise, highlight any skills that you have, and tell us your motivation for coming out.
Okay, so, for the past 13 years, I've been an occupational therapy assistant in various settings. I've done adults with disabilities, kids with disabilities, working in and out of public school. I've done mental health in hospitals, public state hospitals. I am currently 11 weeks away from finishing my master's in OT. I was here last year as a long-term sub in preschool. This year, not gonna be able to sub as much, especially if this ends up working out. I'm currently in Woburn right now at a rehab facility, and one of our main focuses is on education of families and patients. So, I'm used to incorporating multi-levels of players in engaging them to kind of come up with a common plan, like a treatment plan and whatnot. So, that's kind of, and being able to see like the bird's eye view of everything in the room is kind of one of my strong suits.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
So, those of you that know me, I am very transparent with just about anything and everything within respect, because obviously, I have a background in medical, so understanding the HIPAA laws and personal, you know, identifying, identifying information. So, there's certain capacities that is information that shouldn't be distributed, but always kind of go with an open-minded approach a lot of times when I'm interacting with other people in the community, and just kind of remaining calm and professional in most of situations as much as I can.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with something that you felt strongly about? And how would you handle a disagreement between two board members?
So, for the, I have a twofold question. So, the first part of that question, I would not expect anybody to not disagree with certain things, because it's kind of what makes the world go around. It's just how you go about the disagreement and handling the solution, and remembering that there's a lot of emotion and passion behind the reason that we're all here for one kind of common focus. It's for the children, it's for the community, it's providing a healthy, safe place for these students to come every day and out. So, that's kind of like reminding ourselves what the main purpose is. A disagreement amongst the board members, I'm kind of like the peacekeeper anyways at OT. We're kind of like the gray area, so I'm kind of used to helping put out fires and problem-solving. It's kind of what occupational therapists do. So, kind of doing the task analysis and kind of breaking down the whole thing, and then kind of coming in with an evidence-based approach to kind of support things. And at the end of the day, you can still agree to disagree.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
I think the best quality for a board member should be having a connection with the community, with the students, and with the administration, and being able to work collaboratively with a variety of individuals.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page about what's going on in the building?
100%, like, because even given the experience, I think, having worked in different schools, if there isn't transparency kind of across the board, it creates a divide and then makes it more challenging to bring things to the table, to be able to agree on things, because obviously, the school board members are not in the building, day in and day out, seeing the day-to-day operations between the educators, the students, the interactions with the families. I think that if there are set issues, that there's a way that we can work together.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
I think there is a huge diverse spectrum of students and families and cultures and levels of outside and inside at our school. And I think we have such a wide variety. I've always preached that, like, CBRIC's its own culture, because we have such a wide spectrum. And I think including everybody to be, to have the opportunity to be kind of on the same playing field, give everybody the same opportunities to be their best self. So, I would say sort of like the equality and inclusion type thing. I think it's really important for all of our students to feel included, needed, and wanted. Those are kind of like your primary self-needs.
Final question, time. Do you think that, with all the things that we've already talked about, do you think that the time is something that you could commit to?
Yes, because my school work is diminishing at this point, so my availability is very flexible.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good evening. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your background, and highlight any skills that you think are important for this position and your motivation.
Before I do that, I'd like to thank all the people stepping up to the plate and coming out and applying for this. It's a good journal. My name is Earl Spruce. I'm retired. I won't tell you how old I am, because it might be biased. I'm retired, and so I can answer the last question first, since I have plenty of time. As long as it doesn't interfere with my fishing.
Perfect.
But yeah, I have a bachelor's in engineering and I have a master's in education. I taught for 13 years in Portland School System. Three years I was in Rochester and then back to Portland. And I had two businesses, retired from the last one about six years ago and which is still in existence. My partner runs it. And let's see, as far as education goes, I have worked in prison ministry for a couple, three years in that. I have sort of an innate ability to counsel people and bring them back, send it. So I do a lot of non-professional counseling and it's a gift I have.
What would you say your motivation is?
My motivation, my motivation is that, you know, I'm here. I'm here, I have the time available. I have a lot of experience besides my educational experience and, you know, why not put it to use? And I'd like to see, I'd like to see the numbers change for this school district. I mean, we are in the bottom 20% in the state out of 185 school districts. We're 176, you know, something done about that. And on the other side of that is that we're in 20%, we're in the top 20% for parity in teacher-student ratio. You know, it doesn't make sense. More teachers aren't going to do it. There's got to be something done in this system besides hiring and firing and it's got to be a drive to get this, these kids motivated. I think there's a lot of, a lot of money being spent and a lot of time being spent on non-educating and non-educational areas, you know? So if I can be helpful in that, I'd be glad to do that.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community during that time?
Well, I do, I'm involved in, maybe somewhere down the beach, I take care of the flags, you know, down twice a year and they're in district here right now at last song. But I also have a lot of people in the town have been involved with them, DBW and other people. So I get around, I hear, my wife's involved in the women's group. So I, you know, I'm over there being in town and I do communicate with them. Now, the transparency is, you know, like Rick said, honesty. It's, you know, it's so simple. Why do we complicate it? Just tell the truth. If someone doesn't like it, what are you going to do, lie? Yeah? That just makes a whole ball of wax. It's telling the truth. It took me a long time, I got to tell you, to learn to tell the truth. But today, the truth is such a tree, you know, the truth is the best way out of anything. No matter how you feel, no matter, don't read people's minds, how they're going to react. Tell the truth. It's none of your business what they're thinking anyways. So, and it starts from the top, you know? If we can't be truthful here and can't be honest here, how's that filter down with the classroom? Not through the teachers. You reap what you sow.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with something that you felt strongly about and how would you handle it?
Throw the cheers.
Other than that.
You think I haven't been disagreed with in my life yet? I don't run the show. I don't run the show. I'm here to help. I'm just, I'm not going to agree on everything, but I'm not going to bang my spoons on the tray, you know? I can take it. So there are going to be disagreements. I try to, you know, I can explain it in a different way that you might understand and come to my point of view, that's fine, but if you don't, I think, you know, we have the unity is very important.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
You said it. You said it. You know, I mean, if we sit here, you know, and discussing stuff and we've got stuff going on in our mind, we're not letting, we're not sharing it. We're in fear. And fear is not a good place to be to make decisions. Either there or you're, you know, you're telling the truth or you're in fear of hurting somebody's feelings. Tell them the truth.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page about what's going on in the building?
I think it's very important. I don't think it happens, you know? I don't think it happens a lot of times, but I think it's very important. And coming up with a sort of a little mission statement that's, you know, like two or three sentences long, you know, and everybody can get in on that would be, I think, the start in getting unity, you know, on the board. Just something simple.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
Just discuss that. Do we stand in the state? I mean, why should, this is an affluent community, you know, there's a lot of people that are, but this, overall, between the, when we were getting the money from the, from the power plan and now all the industry that's committed, all the businesses committed, we shouldn't, you know, we're not hurting for money. We're hurting how we're spending that money, you know? You can throw all the money in the world at education and it doesn't work. Students are going to catch their education. They're not going to be taught their education. And if the demonstration in the classroom isn't to demonstrate life and honesty and things like that, it's not going to be, they're going to catch what you're doing. If you're lying, they're going to become better liars than you. So I think there's a lot of, that hasn't been done in the curriculum this week. But why should it be? I mean, we are not Clermont, we're not some, you know, Brofton, New Hampshire, my God, Pearl Inn, all boarded up buildings and we're not those communities. And we're right down where with them. Shouldn't be. Shouldn't be.
And I know you've already answered this, so, but the last question is about time. So do you feel like you can commit to the time?
I don't want to have it. Five of them wanted.
I'd prefer not to do that. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Christine Warnock and I live in Seabrook, New Hampshire.
Can you briefly share your background and experience and highlight any skills that you think would be important for the school board?
Sure.
And your motivation?
Okay, so I'll start with my background. I have a bachelor of science in administration of criminal justice and I started my career in family court and I worked with juveniles and parents and families to, I had an interment case load trying to keep kids out of the system. Then also had students who were, well, yeah, they were students, but my caseload also had kids who were placed out of the system and so I kept track of those students. So working with the various stakeholders in the, in the society. So it would have been the court system, human services and the schools to sort of keep that. And I owned the student and, or the child and trying to get them back on track. I broke from that, had a family and then went back to school and got my master's degree in education. So I've been in education for 23 some odd years and that's where I still am. I was a classroom teacher for many of those years and in recent past, I moved into a specialist position. So I have my reading, writing specialist certification and I'm also a math specialist and I work currently as a math specialist in my school. So the skills I bring to the table are the opportunity to work with teachers and as you mentioned, data. It's all data-driven decision-making that happens with myself and the team and deciding who all, what students might need some additional help. So we have an MTSS system for both reading and math. So I've been involved with that since its inception back in 2012, I think. So I hold data meetings with the staff and we go through data, we work with, you know, how we're going to help our students close those gaps that are happening for various reasons. So I have an opportunity to work with teachers, but also I have students that I work with and that's where my passion lies. I very much enjoy working with the students and getting them excited about learning, making sure that they're feeling like they're in a safe and welcoming environment because if they don't feel that, the learning won't happen. My motivation is to get involved with this community. I moved here six years ago. I don't have students, children in the school system, nor did I ever have them there. My students, my kids went to different schools. I grew up in Lowell. I did not go to the public school system. I was also protected from much of what would have happened in the Lowell public school system. However, I feel a need and desire to give back to this community and pay attention to what's happening there and do lend my expertise to try to make it a more functional place for the students and school.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
As a teacher, I think it's really important to be mindful of your communication and how you present yourself and what you have to say. So I think it's important to be transparent, but also to be mindful of the recipient and how your communication might be received. So tread lightly, even if you are trying to be transparent. And of course, there's going to be items that won't be up for discussion and also to again, validate people's concerns or questions, but also bear in mind that you have a responsibility to the board to hold a professional outlook and keep things private that need to be private, but also be available and forward and honest with parents who do or the board members who have questions.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with something that you felt strongly about? And then how would you handle a disagreement between board members?
Yeah, it's never fun to be the person that no one agrees with, but that does happen. And, you know, I think that being, being able to move forward, you know, agreeing that, you know what, okay, this isn't where we're headed, that's fine. So long as the decision is being made with the students in mind or the, you know, and it's data-driven and there are reasons behind what you're doing, you know, obviously we need a united front. If there were others disagreeing, I'd try to stay in my lane. If I felt like there was, they needed some interjection, I might, I might, you know, just say, you know, try to be a peace giver, if you will, and say, oh, can we just kind of look at each other's, you know, sides of this, you know, but walk a mile in someone else's shoes goes a long way. But I do, you know, I recognize that there will be disagreements. I, we're adults and I would like to think that generally speaking, unless absolutely necessary, I like to try to stay in my lane.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
A lot of people have gone prior to me and I would have to agree with much of what they've said and I don't know that I have a new idea for you. I think, you know, being committed to what you're, what you're doing, being committed to the position, giving your 100% and, you know, being objective throughout, I think is important.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page about what's going on?
Yeah, this hits a little home for me, being in a school, because we don't always, it's, again, it's part of that my lane thinking, there are things that the administration is required to do and it's their job. And I feel like there are things that the school board is required to do and that's their job. I think everybody needs to be aware. I think you need to be on the same page in a, in a sense of informationally, but I think it's okay to have a different sense of opinion behind the scenes and sort of work towards what common ground you can come to. United front is absolutely important, but I think it's also important to remember where the responsibilities lie and not to take over someone else's responsibility and vice versa.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
You know, the equity in education, you know, the students walking away with the same education that their peers nearby are having. I have a lot of direct experience with that and I'm happy to share that experience. And I just feel like, I know teachers are leaving this field and we need to stop, stop the mass exodus, but also develop their sense of belonging because everyone needs that for your job, for your learning. You need to feel like you're valuable, you make a difference. And so to make sure that we are promoting that sense of belonging to the staff and then making sure that that transfers over to the students and then that's, that's the first sort of line of defense and then developing curriculum they were after.
Final question, time.
Yeah, well, my kids are grown. I can just live at Seabrook with my husband, don't do a whole lot. I was considering a second job, but then I said, well, this came out, this opened up. I was like, you know, I have time and it sounds like this might be a second job, so there you go.
Very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, Mr. Khan.
My name is Atik Khan. I am 29 years old and before you ask your first question, having the benefit of listening to everyone that's spoken today, I don't think that there will be a bad choice in mind, so I just want to say that.
Thank you for saying that. Can you briefly share your background and experience and then highlight any skills that you have that you think would be important for being on the school board and your motivation for doing this?
Of course. So I have lived in Seabrook for 20 years now. I attended this exact school, this library looks a little bit different from when, from the third grade to the fifth grade. And then I went to Burwick Academy in South Burwick, Maine from the sixth grade to the 12th grade. I graduated from there in 2012 and then I received my bachelor's of science with a concentration in finance and a minor in economics from Bryant University in Smithfield, Rhode Island. Since then, I have been working on developing my career within finance, within the pharmaceutical and biotech industries. But I may have left this school system when I was in the fifth grade, but I never left the community. I used to work at the Seabrook Recreation Center in the summer camps as a counselor. I used to work multiple jobs within the town. My parents owned a small business on Route One, Rich Hill Convenience Store for 15 years. So I feel as though my community ties have been very strong. My motivation is very similar to everyone else's. I think that our goal should be to provide every possible resource that we can to our kids so that they have the tools that they need to move forward with whatever they choose to move forward with. So I think that the kids is the easy answer for you, but there's a lot of things that come with that as well.
Communication and community engagement are vital for our board's success. Can you describe, describe your approach to transparent communication and how you would engage with the community? and how you would engage with the community during your time on the board?
I think open and clear lines of communication are extremely important. I think far too many times, miscommunications happen that aren't necessary, that can be avoided. And myself, that's, that's what I do on a daily basis. Working within finance, I work with all the departments in the company and manage so many different personalities, so many different relationships. So being able to communicate with the individuals within our community, I think, is the most important piece.
How would you feel if the majority of the board disagreed with you on something you felt strongly about? And then how would you handle a disagreement between two board members?
I think for me, taking a step back and viewing the perspective of others has been really helpful. I think that once you can view, be able to view that viewpoint and relate to that person, you begin to, your, your strong stance might soften a little bit. Similarly, being able to be a liaison with those two individuals that are having an issue or within, within any type of conflict. Taking a step back and, and being able to relate to that person and try to create compromise is very important. And I don't think that we live in a very black and white world, there's so much gray involved. So being able to make compromises is important.
What do you think the best quality for a board member would be?
I think the best quality for a board member would be to have that open communication that I had previously said, but also to have the passion to do what's necessary, to have the difficult conversations, and to be able to relate, relate to one another so that you can have a unified stance to move forward.
How important do you think it is for school board members and admin to be on the same page about what's going on in the school building?
It's very important. Will it always happen? Most likely not. But it is very important, because more than anything, it's a partnership. You have to work hand in hand so that the things that, the goals that you set out to achieve can become achievable. So it is very important, and, and whatever it takes to, to have that relationship be, have the synergy for that relationship to be friendly and productive is important.
What do you think the biggest issue facing our school currently is?
So I have had the benefit of listening to everybody else. My answer is a little bit different. I don't think it's an issue as it, it's more of an opportunity. There, there are so many great statistics listed that really put in perspective where we stand as a school district, as a school in general. The opportunity is that we are able to select new leaders that have clear visions that can help us achieve everything that we need to achieve. Meaning, a number is a number. We, we, I promise you, we might not be the number one ranked next year. That seems out of the realm of possibility. But if we can strive to just do better, whether it's not even focusing on the rankings, just trying to do better, I think is important.
Last question, time. Do you think that you could commit the time that it would take to be on the board?
Yes, I, I do feel comfortable with the time commitment. I, I work a lot, if I'm being upfront, but I, I do believe that the time commitment will not be an issue for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
First off, let me say that I am like immensely pleased and excited about all of you coming here. And it honestly makes me a little emotional, because to see all of you want to be involved is like beyond what I could have imagined when we first knew that this position was coming available. So I want to say thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being willing to come. Thank you for wanting to be involved. And you have made it an incredibly, incredibly difficult decision. And I would echo what you said, Mr. Khan, that there is not a bad choice here. And so I am just really, I'm really honestly touched by how many people have come out for this. So our process is going to be to discuss our thoughts. We talked about possibly doing top two or top three, but that, I don't honestly know how I'm going to do that. So if I-
Do you want everyone to potentially nominate one person? And we can each talk about that one person that we have on our potential top spot? And then go from there? I don't either, but we'd have to come up with a-
So, well, so there are-
And that would be a question. If we come up with a couple now, we discuss, can we give ourselves time to think about it?
You could, right? The, the point of, you're, you're essentially replacing the voters, right, in this instance? There's a vacancy for six months. You are serving on behalf of the voters of the community and making a decision about how to put on the, who to put on the board. So your conversation about who you put on the board needs to be public. I mean, I understand the need for reflection. I mean, if you do that, it's, it's with the understanding that you owe an explanation to the public about why you feel you need that time. And so it's, yeah. And budget starts next month, so.
Speaking of time.
Can we just take them all?
Well, I- Whoever you don't take, I've got eight names left, because I can find lots of opportunities.
I, again, I want to echo too. I think being put in this position to make this decision, because it is so very difficult, because we have so many super qualified people. I would hope that we get just as much engagement come March, when the elections come up for this same position. My position will also be available, but I would potentially like to keep it, so I don't want you to necessarily replace me. But if it happens, I would feel like all of you are qualified to do that, and I appreciate that. So that being said, does, do you have some, maybe not one, but a few that you would like to at least engage in conversation? And again, I, I hope this isn't a reflection on any one being better than the other, or I think all of you are different, and you bring different things to the table, and I think that's super important.
So I'll start on it. We'll just get this ball rolling. First, what I'm going to talk about here is, is Earl Spruce. One of the big positives I have marked down for Mr. Spruce is he would be a good community representative for honestly, a demographic of our voters that we don't currently have on the board. He's down at the beach, he's, you know, retired. Doesn't have the kids inside the school system, but recognizes it. But this is also a big part of the school board is like financial oversight, and that's something that the community needs to be represented for, and I, I believe, on like all fronts. His background and everything he speaks about, between the honesty, how he'd like to see things get done. And he hit on one of the biggest things that's been on my mind lately, and that is, how do we bring our scores up? I think Earl is very qualified for the position, would give a, a unique view to the board. And like I said, I represent, we're representative government up here, and this would be a good way to represent probably one of our larger tax bases that their money goes into the school, and there needs to be oversight on that as well. So that's my first one. And do you want to go right into my next one, or do we want to talk about Earl first?
Maybe everyone gives their, is that okay? You guys feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah. So to speak on Mr. Spruce, I like the fact that he did point out there is lots of money being spent on uneducated services. I think that's definitely caught my ear, because I do feel like there, if you look at the school, if you do look at the school budget, it is a lot of money. And I feel like with the numbers down, that clearly we need to focus on the education at some point, or at least a little, and more than other services that, funds are being spent on, transparency. And he pretty much said it, you know, if you can't be honest and within a room, then why be, you know, I mean, why? Yeah, definitely. So I, I was really impressed with just how honest he was, just being here to interview.
You can share other people too, sorry.
I thought we were going to-
Either way, no. Oh, no, you can share if you have others, and then we can kind of work through that.
So I was also impressed with Michelle Perkins, because she has been here at our school.
I agree, I got that down as well.
I think that's important to be within the school, because nobody knows more than the people that are in the school on what may take place and what, you know, what improvements it could be. So I think that, I mean, I, that was a huge one for me, because she's been within the school and worked with the students.
I agree with you on that one. I had her as one of my top three for that reason. I like how she said, she likes the evidence approach to, you know, helping and being on the board by using that. Cassandra was one of my top three as well. I like the, her background and social work and everything that she's done with the kids.
Yeah, this is like, really difficult. I would echo everything you're saying. I would also say that Cassandra and Jessica, to me, are very similar in their backgrounds and their engagement. I, I agree with what you're saying about Mr. Spruce. I think my, my only feedback would be that I personally would probably prefer to have the level of involvement where you have someone in the school, like if you're a parent. I would also say Rich brings another piece of it too, with his emergency management piece and the safety piece.
I would agree with you on Rich. So I, I have Rich marked down as one of my top ones. His big, like, always got to give, you know, shout out to my fellow veterans over here. But he has done a lot with his life and stuff. And his supporting, you know, board's decisions is ultimately, like, when you become a decision, it has to be supported. You can't go run out and start telling people that, you know, oh, I didn't quite agree with this. The decision is a decision. But he's hitting, again, on a whole bunch of other things that I'm, I love to hear. I mean, speaking on civics, STEM, you know, government works. He's, you know, data-driven. I think he would be a strong candidate for the board. And Michelle Perkins is also up on my top three. Being in the school, kids in the school, she has seen what goes on, dated day life. She sees it from the inside. She's worked with the teachers, worked with the administration. I think what both her and Mr. Curtis would bring to the board would be, you know, ideal. Like, he sees everything that happens to these kids outside of school. She's seen what's happened inside of school. They both bring, would bring a great set of eyes to the board as well.
I also like the fact that Mr. Curtis stated that if he was not able to provide information to someone when they have a question, that he would be sure to reach out and do the best he can to get the information.
Okay, if, this is like, like I said, a very impossible task. If we narrowed it down to what seems like the top four for everyone, which again, I, I want to reiterate that it is not a reflection, it's not a reflection on any of you, because I would love for all of you to run in March.
Everyone is highly qualified. Everyone sitting there knows that this job is not going to be easy for us. I do, again, thank everyone for coming out. Like everyone said, put your name on the ballot. Let's, let's make everything a nice, friendly competition in this town. We'll always have the best people coming in and out of the school board. It's not a bad thing to see this many people sitting in here. I never expected that, so. I agree. You want to go top four, then we'll go-
Yeah, and it seems like, based on what I'm hearing from everyone, Richard, Cassandra, Jessica, Michelle would be the top four that everyone would want.
I would say the top four, just listening to everyone talk to me. Richard, Cassandra, Michelle. Just from what everyone, I have marked down, we're talking about the top four. Like you had said, Jessica's background is the same as Cassandra's. I think they would, again, both, but if we have to go, we're going to have to narrow it down to Richard.
Okay, so you're saying Richard, Cassandra, Michelle, Earl. Again, my, my concern would just be, I totally agree with what you're saying, that it is a different demographic, and I think that is important to be representative. I think I would appreciate the, not that you can't be passionate, but I appreciate the passion that comes from being a parent and having direct involvement in the school every day, because you drop kids off every day and you see what's happening. That would be my only reflection on that.
I also think it's important to sometimes listen to somebody that maybe knows how education used to be and how it is now, and how it's changed, and how maybe that's good, but maybe how it's not good.
So another thought would, can we, can we keep the top four in our brains? Can we go through the meeting? And as we, can we move the agenda of nominating till further down on the list? Is that a possibility?
Before questions to amend the agenda, you certainly have the right, you have to do that. You should have a motion, so.
Just a thought on that though, is everyone came here and put in their time to do this-
I, I agree with you.
And to make everyone sit through the rest of our board meeting while, like, this is how- We have nine qualified, nine super qualified candidates, and it's nothing personal against anybody. Like, we're working our way through the list. I think we're going to owe it to these people to have the discussion right now, just- Because if not, we're going to be having the same discussion in an hour when the rest of the meeting comes about.
That is true.
And we're going to be in the same exact spot. My top two are, if we're going with, a big important of having people in the class are Michelle Perkins and Richard Curtis.
Mine would be Michelle Perkins and Earl Spruce.
Mine would be Cassandra and Michelle.
Mine would also be Cassandra and Michelle.
So here's my thought. All four of us have brought up Michelle Perkins' name. I make a nomination that we appoint Michelle Perkins to the school board, to the open school board position. We can be open for discussion, but that's probably the easiest way to narrow this down.
Yes. I just, I hate committing to anybody, because I would like to just welcome everyone. But yes, I would agree with you. It seems like that is, that is the one person.
I have, I have somebody making a motion.
And Kelly seconded.
Okay, so all those in favor? Okay. Again, thank you so much. I, again, not a reflection on anyone's lack of qualifications. And I would just like to reiterate that I'm like really, really impressed with all of you. And I'm really glad that you all came out, and thank you. If you would like to stay, you are absolutely welcome to do that and to listen.
As a parent, I think you guys made the right choice.
Thank you, Rachel. So do you want to take a break? Do you guys want to take a quick break? Everyone get water, go to the bathroom if you need to. Air-conditioned preferably.
Run back to work where it's nice and warm.
Open public comment at 6:09. Is there anyone that has any public comment?
After we just, I think Brian, Mary and Dave went to the next meeting. Because we're.
I told you, you gotta get those meetings on two different lines.
Questions for Mary too.
Oh, that's right.
Right, just wrap it up, wrap it up all. Okay, uh, so we will keep public comment open for 30 minutes. Uh, can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes for August 15th?
I'll make the motions first in minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, it's unanimous.
I have that most recorded.
Okay. Superintendent's report slash SNS principal report.
I have both. Do you want them combined?
Sure, let's just do it.
Save time.
Why not?
I'll try to do that. So I'll keep the superintendent's report short then. Just highlighting sort of returning to school, opening was only a couple of weeks ago at this point, but we are now in the full swing of the third week of school. So just expressing appreciation to teachers, administrators, support staff, our custodians, our food service, our IT folks, our admin assistants, our educational associates, everyone who works to make sure things are ready for kids when they arrive. And there's a lot that happens behind the scenes. Just a note about policy, which we'll talk about later in the meeting. And in Dr. Hobbs' report, it's some more information about Portrait of a Learner. We'll talk about goals at the October joint board meeting. So we did the visioning piece and now we'll be moving into the goal-setting piece of that. And then switching over to the principals' report. Again, thanks to folks for that. Special thanks to Don Sistrone for some obstacles on Friday and that in the heat. This Friday is our first theme day, Recognizing Patriots/NFL Day. So we're encouraging students to dress in a favorite jersey or wear favorite team colors this week. And blue and white, if you're, when in doubt, are always good. Those are our school colors. Fifth and sixth grade have already completed beginning of the year assessments. So those are started this week, first grade seventh and eighth. And we are slated to begin intervention groups next week, this week of the 18th. And teachers will be having that data and we anticipate publicly sharing our NWE data out with parents at fall conferences, parent, teacher conferences. I won't say more about that right now. Athletics began last week with tryouts. It was a little too hot for tryouts a couple of the days, so some things got moved around. But our first game started this week for some of our teams. Volleyball was playing their first game today. A thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Russell of Byfield, Massachusetts for a donation of $212.50 to Staples, which can be used to purchase school supplies for students. Congratulations to Seabrook Middle School teachers Denise Morrow on 30 years of service to public education and to Donna Butcher for 41 years of service to public education. They're both amazing. And then we still have some vacancies for parrot professionals and substitute teachers. Visit the SAU website or call our office if you're interested in either of these employment opportunities.
Thank you.
We got it.
And then Dave's report, Curriculum Instruction.
Sure. Dave's report is primarily about Portrait of a Learner and some of the work that happened at the beginning of the year. So he gave a little sketch of kind of what's coming up with that. Again, we expect to have goals to share in October, staff here, both the elementary school, middle school staff, spend time really looking at that and analyzing what's already in place, what are the gaps. So we'll spend time fleshing out those goals for that October joint board meeting. And then just a recognition of all of the summer programs and professional development that happened, including science standards training, the seat of summer and fresh start programs at Winnicott, band camp at Winnicott, a petting zoo here, putting together all the schedules, rocket lab, surfing, whale watches. We had our leadership retreats, bus routes got changed around, summer school credit recovery, Power School University, freshman seminar, deep cleaning of our facilities, phone upgrades, network upgrades, HVAC upgrades, extended school year programming, and then athletic tryouts at the high school begin mid-August. So there's always a ton happening here in the summer. Our buildings are rarely quiet. Thank you.
Student services are, I'm on a roll.
Mary. Matt and Brian are at least here to take me off, out of the heat for a couple. So Mary just submitted in some information about the New Hampshire Medicaid to schools program. It's been around a very long time. Back in 2016, there were some changes to the law with respect to Medicaid billing in public schools. But while Medicaid is roughly 1% of the revenues that we receive in public schools, that represents the fourth-largest federal funding program for public schools in this country. So we receive revenue for students who receive particular qualifying services. And we can bill for students who might be identified as a disability and for those who are not, based on the level of those services provided. So it could include nursing services for a student who receives particular individualized support from our school nurse. We can bill for things like testing from our school psychologist, occupational therapy. So a number of services that we provide in schools that we get some offsetting revenue for. We don't provide those services because we get the revenue. We're required to provide those services because students need them. Many of those are prescribed by special education, but not all. Anyone can request that their child receive an evaluation in schools. And if the team decides we have to do that, we proceed with that.
So any child that gets an evaluation, whether they're on IEP or special education or not, can be billed through Medicaid?
If they are Medicaid eligible, then yes, we can bill for that.
And what makes somebody specifically Medicaid eligible?
So that is a determination. You have to fall within 200% of the federal poverty line and families apply for those benefits. They're often provided insurance coverage. That information is confidential. So we send home requests to all families. We don't actually know who qualifies for those benefits and who doesn't. There is a third-party billing agency that submits the information. You know, if we have a signed document from the parent that's allowing us to bill for those services that we provide, then we can submit that to the third-party billing agency. They will submit, based on those services, to the agency. If the student qualifies, we get some reimbursement. If they don't, we don't get reimbursement, but we don't know which students qualify.
Do we, do we have a line item in the budget, Matt, where it shows every year? Is there an actual line from Medicaid for the monies that we receive in the budget?
Yeah, so that's under the revenue report. So that'll show those, that'll be updated on a monthly basis as we submit for reimbursement and receive those funds. You'll see it, there'll be, there'll be a lag, but you'll, you'll start seeing it, you know, fairly early in the school system.
So is it an actual line item that says Medicaid?
Yep, so it, so if you look on the revenue report, page one, it says, under federal revenue,
Okay.
Medicaid, the third section. We currently have zero money received because it's so early.
Yeah, because they take forever to, yeah. So I have another question. So we received an email in regards to the same thing North Hampton received.
Yep.
And is there a question that down the road, there may be an issue where it's not, that there be no parental consent?
I don't have that issue. We can't, we can't provide most of these services or bills directly.
Down the road, down the road, there, down the road, there's something stating right now. It hasn't been approved by the state. But down the road, they, if it's voted on, that there are services that can be performed and depending on what the vote goes through, that it may not require parental consent.
I mean, I can't speak to what Congress may or may not do.
Yeah, but that is something that's.
But right now, we're billing for the services that are current under federal law. So, and we have to have parental permission to be able to.
I know, I'm saying down the road, this could happen.
I hear you. Again, I can't speak to what Congress may or may not do. I know that party who wrote to the board had that concern. I, I find that unlikely, given my experience with federal bureaucracy.
And it would have to change federally. It would not be state-level. At this point, it wouldn't be a bill that they could pass in the state.
I think the state has to adopt, does the state have to adopt that measure?
The state adopts its own set of rules, subject to federal Medicaid.
So if the federal government makes an amendment, they can vote to accept the standard.
Right.
And then it would be bringing a lot of these concerns up to the New Hampshire state representative.
To me, it sounds like a hard sell to get people on board to allow.
Parental consent, I mean, if you're gonna talk to my child about his mental health, I would certainly like to know. And that's a requirement right now. And I believe so. I mean, especially if you're gonna bill it. I just know that there's like a big federal push for some of these fringe ideas recently with that, you know, trying to get parental consent out. They make it easier. They're afraid that the kids won't speak because they're afraid with their parents. I just want to make sure that we keep our school and our board safe for, like, this is the stuff that scares a lot of voters. So figured when things come out, we have to, we have to talk about and discuss them. Unfortunately, Mary had to leave because I'm sure she could probably dive much deeper into this.
Into the proposed federal changes? I mean, really what we're talking about are laws that have been in effect since back to 2016. So most districts in this country have been billing for, again, those routine services that we typically provide in schools for a number of years. So it's not a change really for us, other than we have a few more people whose services can be billed for than we probably did in 2016 or 2010, just because of how the world continues to evolve and then the students continue to evolve.
I was just gonna say, for clarification purposes, it says that the historical revenue for Seabrook 21, 22 is 82,000 roughly. And she has highlighted, but then 22, 23 was only 59,000. And it seems like the three surrounding those years were significantly less. But our population has stayed, we've only lost a few, right?
So if you look at the full range of services that you can bill for, some of those services could include a student who is placed in a hospital setting, right? You know, if the district is paying for that placement, there may be some reimbursement that returns to the district as a result of that. It is not unusual to see fluctuation year in year when needs like, significant needs like that occur.
Is the bus service billable through the Medicaid? Like, if someone has a special, that gets reimbursed?
So transportation is billable with Medicaid. Yeah, I mean, Medicaid reimbursement is like a small drop in the bucket, but it.
The border providers don't even take Medicaid anymore.
There, there was an uptick across the board for all, all districts in that 21, 22 year because it was coming out of the COVID.
Yeah.
And there were increased services, compensatory services that rolled into that specific year that we were able to, to go back on to. services that rolled into that specific year that we were able to, to go back on to. But as far as legislative updates, I mean, that's, that's part of our role as, as far as monitoring with, you know, and, and we will certainly report back to you on any changes. You'll also receive updates from UNH School Boards Association for any of those substantive changes as well.
You guys have any... I just found my important... Why can't you see it? I'm sorry. So obviously, it's not on the agenda, and I kind of thought that this information that she gave us would go into more, she would probably bring more in depth up. But I really have a lot of questions in regards to the full-service community's full grant that's being applied for. I mean, she's not here, but the, the grant has already been submitted as of August 8th, right? That was the deadline?
No. The, the deadline is like December of 2023.
So is that for next year?
That's correct.
Okay. So what, so the grant that was to be submitted on August 8th, which is under review in October, to receive funds for December, that would have been for last year's into this year?
So I think the deadlines were moved. I think what, what you're speaking to, there was originally a projected deadline, and they were very late in the startup process of rolling out the grants. So they didn't roll it out until very late last spring. Districts who had to hire a person to work as the grant manager, we hired Megan, weren't able to start those for the most part until July, June or July. And so that grant window, the planning grant, was originally supposed to run through December of this school year. There is a possibility that it will be extended until the spring, but as of right now, I believe it still stands at December, I think, Matt, because I think we both have partial implications.
So it's currently, it's currently through December. However, we have since received two communications, one that they anticipate that'll be, or that if, there's a possibility it's extended to March. And then we've just recently received another communication that there's a possibility it'll be extended to June. So it very much is in flux. It's something that we're...
So with those extensions, that, that'll be extended to the time that it's all due? Or that they make their decision?
Yeah.
So, so that's, so that's the period of, of the planning period that we, that we're working towards.
Everything has to be gathered, put together, processed, built out, all the stuff written completely per the federal crazy grant guidelines, and then sent off by...
Whichever deadline they ultimately go.
Whatever the deadline. So everyone's still working on this with input?
Realistically, this, this is a national grant.
We're not likely...
That we, we are not a necessarily the best candidate, looking at larger urban areas. However, it's a great opportunity for us to do some of this planning work and identify some of the needs that we may have. And it's certainly beneficial, the, the planning funds that we receive. But realistically, we will, we will, we will do everything in our power as far as applying for, you know, and, and going for the grant. But it, it's likely, we're not a great candidate for it, I guess is what I'm saying.
And the grant that we got for the grant planning, that covers all the costs gathering?
That's the planning, right. That's $150,000. You'll see in the revenue report, we've already received $75,000 of it.
Does that cover her benefits as well?
Yeah. So it covers full salary benefits for, for the personnel, and then there's additional costs for...
Professional development.
Right.
All the information gathering is not free?
So there's no, there's, there's no additional cost to Seabrook School District. No, no funds will be coming out of the operating budget. All those costs are inclusive, inclusive to the grant.
And every time they extend that back, it still covers all of it, correct?
The, the amount of funds remains the same. It's just the period of time that we utilize the funds.
Gotcha.
She would be working the whole year anyway, though, correct? Like her, her contract was for the school year?
We planned through December.
Oh, through December, okay.
So yeah, so we, if, if they make a hard stop at December, she will be done in December.
Okay. So when the, when, all right, so once they gather all the information and they, they write the grant up, is the information in the grant that they're proposing going to be shared with the board on different programs? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. To Matt's point, I, we think it's very unlikely that we in the end will be a recipient of this federal grant. There are limited number of projects being issued nationwide. UNH received some funds to really look at how they can utilize those funds in states more like New Hampshire, right? A lot of times, these awards go to more urban areas, right? Boston Public Schools, you know, Chicago Public Schools, New York City Public Schools, right? The, the schools like that are more often the recipients. States like New Hampshire often are not competitive in these because they want large districts where they can serve multiple, you know, larger populations of students under these umbrellas. So this is really kind of a pilot.
They don't like to give the money to such a small, little bit of...
They are unlikely to. And I think that the information that we gather and the time we're spending on this really helps us think about what resources we do have in our larger communities and how we can best leverage those to meet the needs of children at early ages, which is the gap we're particularly trying to close. You know, as we've heard, certainly there are places to fill all along the way. But we know, for example, that there is one licensed childcare program in Seabrook, other than the school's preschool program, which means that a lot of children in that three to five-year-old range, right, aren't having access to preschool before they start kindergarten at the age of five. So looking at services like that, partnering with the library, partnering with other agencies in the area, I think will be helpful to families in the long run to help students get off on the right foot.
So it's kind of like using this $150,000 grant as a plan, as a blueprint. A lot of people brought up, like, we need a mission statement, a plan, or a blueprint on how we move numbers and things forward. So I, I mean, if, if you don't get the full grant, it is what it is, but at least you have a year's worth of taking in data that we can now sit down as a board, decide what's best moving forward, and how we can implement it with our budgetary.
Right. Who can take advantage of it as well. Because, I mean, even if we're planning it, it's, you know, you never know. What if they did approve us? You know, I mean, there's, we all have questions, you know, like, for instance, where are we going to, if we do a DCS, and where are we going to put these children? We didn't even have one for social distancing, you know what I mean? So of course, you think of things like that, that if we're willing to put in for the $150,000 grant, to apply for the larger grant, there is some thought on this. And I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, once the, before the grant is submitted, because you never know, that, you know, we're allowed to review it and see what it does entail.
Sure.
Because there is a lot of questions.
Yeah. Great.
Awesome.
Perfect. All right. Thank you again.
So we've got a lot of recognitions. A big thank you to our EAs. Our EAs have come back and been really, really flexible with schedule changes and trying to meet IEPs. And Mr. Dow has done a really great job, really, really making sure that IEP, EPE, and then beyond that, helping to take some of the burden. I think we have to go sweetheart and so just wants to make sure that that's on the road. Patito also continues to be a huge support to us. Again, looking at Jones, Australian, and persistent bank, having a more than possible, so hot, it's a huge sheet of paper. Also Tractor Supply, with a, a new chick who brought back, which will be part of our science program expansion. So that's exciting. Information has gone home to families about band. So support, music grades, seats, music, fourth grade is for the band. We've also begun our screening, so and then we made it to a speed that's begun. We'll be working on being that needed together. We are, we have some information about becoming a math-powered cohort school. So the past few years, we've been implementing a new math curriculum. And the next step is that we're really supporting teaching how do, how do we, how do we make math engaging the fund? So it's not just about the program, but how we're going to do the construction. So more than constantly in the way that we develop and approach the math. So we'll be having teachers basically help some other schools, maybe some teachers from other schools and other districts, so that we can learn how to support our students. We're excited about bringing the music program back. Pam Bubler is a retired music teacher from New Hampshire who's literally amazing with music. She's, she's here all summer, so she'll be supporting a couple of educators. We're bringing back our partnership with UNH, we're hopefully developing literacy, with some information there about that. And let me just say one more. We are partnering with Boston College Society to be part of a research project, which is basically, how do we teach our community, our, our students and our parents that our kids can do? And so what this is, is a community, a school-wide homework assignment, where our students will come home and they're going to pick some sort of passion that they have, and it's something independent that they do at home, and then they bring it back to the school in a sort of case, something fun that they've learned. For example, I want to learn how to cook, or how to cook something, and then bring it back to the school to support. So information, that's hot, that's information that's coming up, which parents love that soon. The last thing, we are excited to support our early learners, or through age, go through preschool. So we're going to be hosting a playgroup here at the school. This is part of our preschool development with Patrice Baker. It's kind of a tangent to the grant work that you were just talking about. But our goal is to start making trends and start making the school a resource for families before they get there. Earlier, we can get students to our school to realize this place where they can do resources and support them. So starting next Wednesday, we'll be having, we're coming to the school for some information from Patrice, and then we're going to have a playgroup on the playground, recording parallel to the one at the rec. So the rec is doing Thursdays, and we're doing Wednesdays. We got 10 people to their first event. Our goal is to try to keep up the rec and, and support each other in the program.
So can I ask a question? Where, the preschool students, how are, how are people being made aware of this to sign up?
So we've been pushing this out. We have it in three different libraries. We're pushing the flyer all over social media. We've sent it over to our parent group. We've sent it over to the library. Patrice, it also helped the comments at Seminole. We've actually been pushing the flyer out. Just have two community events that have been really well attended. And so right now, or halfway between the library, the rec, word of mouth, and our social media, we can word out. As I'm sitting here, I assume you should send it to Chat 22 as well. So there are definitely more places, but any community member who sees it on our Facebook page, you can share it out too, to share it out to your network. What we want is for every family in this town to know that school is a resource. I mean, as soon as you move into Seabrook, we want to be supported. And that's a lot of the other grant work that we're doing.
Andy, you got the Fall Festival coming up. You got some good music playing there.
I hear, I hear there are some good musicians coming to the Fall Festival.
Who is that? My husband?
Ian Robbs.
My husband, I wouldn't want to say it.
It's my husband.
It would be not allowed.
We're going to have a good time.
It's going to be fun. I think it's really fun.
Yep. The United Arts team is going to be really busy getting together those big celebrations of learning. And our goal this year is to really connect the celebration of learning, not just to be desert projects like Puntup, it's really going to be connected to our heritage. So it's not just a study to be opened, so it's not just something to do separately. So that's one of our objectives.
Love it. Seems like they're doing a lot of really great things. I hope that continues. One question I would have is, in regards to EAs, who started with that, I, I'm curious to know how, who exactly facilitates specific things for EAs as far as like how they, is it, is it more the union?
Professional development?
I think every, I think it's, it's a combination. Yeah. I mean, I think, I'm, I'm curious, do you feel like you, as a building admin, or the SAU, as that level of admin, or the union controls more about what happens with the EAs specifically?
I, I think Tim and I, Mary, when we do want to push that up, the SAU supports us. The SAU definitely will support us with the help and everything. But we like to keep the, as far as professional development goes, the SAU has done a great job supporting Medicaid and the work of China. They provide us with resources. Mary, do you need some help today about some training that's happening in the state? So I think it's collaborative, but when it comes to supervision evaluation and supporting them through the EAs, that's , that's...
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you. So I've included the expenditure and revenue reports year-to-date. We are early in the fiscal year, so there is not a great deal to report on. We are tracking well, thankfully, at this point.
Three weeks in, you're doing great.
What problem?
Busy, busy, Matt.
One note on the expenditure report. If you see on page six, under Buildings, you'll see we're over budget by $41,000 in repair and maintenance. That is, that's the boiler replacements that will be funded via the Building Maintenance Expendable Trust. So once that is paid through the trust, that's, that account will go back into the positive. Moving on to the revenue side, I was, I was so excited to hear questions about revenue.
They're going to be coming, don't you worry.
So this is where, this is where you find the Medicaid revenue. So Medicaid, for example, we are estimating conservatively that we'll receive $60,000. So when we make those estimates, that's the amount of funds that are, that we, that are reduced from what we received in the town. So when we set tax, those are the estimated revenues that set the tax rate. So we anticipate we're going to get $60,000. If we go beyond that, then that's surplus revenue that affects the, the bottom line to the positive. If we go below that, that affects the, the bottom line to the negative. Similarly, we're, you know, we estimate that we're going to receive special education aid, building aid. You'll see the Seabrook UNH PDG, which is preschool development grants, for $75,000. That's half of the grant. We're going to receive another $75,000 later in the year. And then you'll also see, you know, contributions in donations. So that's when, you know, an organization, a company, or individual donates to the school, you'll see the revenue there. And then there's interest on investments. That's the banking interest that we receive in, you know, for our accounts. And, and the largest number is the current appropriation. That's the, the tax assessment that we receive through the town for our, for our operating budget. Finally, I just want to note, we did, you know, our, our fiscal year did end June 30th, 2023. And as you know, we go through an audit process in August, where the Plaza Konstantin comes on site and reviews our financials. We do have preliminary results. Our unreserved fund balance was $6,585. As you know, last year's budget was a default budget, so we were already pretty razor-thin. Additionally, we had significant special education costs this past year to the tune of $400,000 over budget. So, so this is a lower unreserved fund balance, and we typically return to the town. However, that $6,585 will be returned to the town to, to offset tax assessments. Be happy to, oh, sorry, one last thing. I will be bringing forth a full preliminary audit results report in the October board meeting. So that will go into a little more detail about the factors that were involved in the unreserved fund balance, our expendable trusts, or where our food service balance ended, and then any audit control recommendations that we...
Is there any way to get our special education costs down? Or is this like, are we locked into being over budget and spent, like, it seems like we spent clearly a ton of our money on special education?
Well, special education is a, is a large piece of our budget. We are required by, you know, state and federal law to provide services for students with disabilities. Now, as far as, you know, potentially minimizing costs, that's where a lot of our, you know, early intervention work comes into play. That's where some of our, our different programming that Carrie and Mary are working on to address some of these, these issues early on effectively to, to minimize those special education costs long-term. So oftentimes, there's, you know, there, there may be an investment in special education to, to recognize longer term. So oftentimes, there's, you know, there may be an investment in special education to, to recognize longer-term results, but the fact remains is there's, there's going to be a cost to special education and it's based on student need. So when we're budgeting a year in advance, we, those, those may not be the same students that we have that following year. So there may be a family that moves in that requires additional services or in our district placement that increases our cost. It could go the other way, but it's, it's very difficult to have a very accurate forecast here in advance when, when students change, when, when needs change. So it's, it's, it's one of those accounts that oftentimes is, is very volatile.
Does the number of kids on IEPs affect that number? Is that a separate thing from special education? Is that all tied together? So you have people, every year, place, I mean, we have slightly higher number, we have higher numbers of children that have IEPs in this community than we do in the rest of the SAU. So does that mean that they're saving a lot more money on their special education because they have less per capita kids on IEPs?
Um, I, I would, I wouldn't, yeah.
So it's not necessary, if they're on an IEP, special education doesn't have to like automatically cover that. We're talking about like, like special needs.
If you're on an individual education plan, that falls under the special education budget, but I would say that needs vary greatly and the cost for people on an IEP can vary greatly. For a student, might be in and out of district placement, it costs a district enough million dollars a year because of the significance of the needs that they have. And a student may be getting a very minimal level of service, right, where they're getting pulled out per an hour and a half a week to receive some math stuff. So it's a very different scale.
On a percentage basis, we're not, we're close to the stat.
I just wasn't, I wasn't a hundred percent sure how it worked. Like if like, you find a new child that goes on an IEP, like that brings your line up a little bit, but it may, but it may not be as much as somewhere that needs to be sent somewhere else, like.
And that's the difficulty, it's just really student-specific and based on what theirs, what their needs are, so it can vary wildly. But I would, I would not characterize Seabrook as very different from a special education perspective than the other schools within S A U twenty-one or the state. It's relatively at the, the average.
And that's percentage-wise, does that make sense?
This is a, just so you know, this is a conversation we have in every school district. So you, it is certainly not unique to Seabrook, it is, is a large amount of money, but it's, it's.
Yeah, I just figured, get the details from my head so I know what I'm talking about when I talk to people.
So if we send a student out of district, it costs a lot of money. Is there ever a case where another school sends another student from them to our district?
So for.
Because we have a Title I school.
These are primarily special, special education placements, so these would primarily be, I mean, that certainly could happen, but these would primarily be smaller school programs, right, that are specialized. Like Perch Street is an example, they support children with autism that are located in sports nets. That's an example of the type of setting. So most of the placements we talked about tend to be of that nature rather than.
To a specialized facility, not like moving.
I mean, it's always, it's always typically in the best interest, I mean, if at all possible, we want the student in, in the school. And that's, that's the case for, for all, all of the school districts. However, there are specialized needs that may not be able, that a certain school can't service, right? Particularly when we're talking about like medical needs, right? So, so typically, like, so we wouldn't necessarily be a school that would receive those type of students. Because there'd be very specialized services that we, we aren't necessarily equipped to handle in any event, so.
Thank you for that answer.
Awesome, thank you. I'm gonna close public comment at six forty-six, by the way. I opened it at six oh nine, okay. So we're just gonna say it's very close to thirty. So we're gonna close public comment at six forty-six. And then we can proceed with the facilities.
Yes, so Peter Mora, the facilities manager, included a monthly management report on board docs. It's the typical inspections, he has a few installations. You know, one area of note is on, in the kitchen. We did install the, the new dishwasher and tilt skillet. If you recall, you approved an award of bid for those purchases back in the spring. There's a long lead time, so it's finally being installed. That's a pretty big upgrade in the kitchen. So, but in any event, it's, I will, I will commend the facilities department for really doing an amazing job in preparing the school for, for the start of the, the school year. They, you know, there's a lot to be done, there's a lot going on in the school with, with summer programs, so they have to work around. And, and they really work hard to get the school ready.
Thank you. Continuing business, so policies first read, if anyone has anything to share after reading over them at another time. Share it with, I think Jen is on the policy committee?
I am.
So that would be important to share with Jen, and she can then take that to the policy committee and go from there. And the acceptance of a gift from Mr. Woolley.
Yes, we received a donation of five hundred dollars from William Woolley to the SMS music program.
Thank you, Mr. Woolley. Yes, thank you, Mr. Woolley. Wait, is this Mr. Woolley's dad? This is Mr. Woolley's dad?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Woolley.
That lives in New Jersey. And he's done, that is so wonderful.
Sorry.
I make a motion to accept the donation of five hundred dollars from William Woolley to be used for the SMS music program.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
In unanimous. Acceptance of gift from Tractor Supply.
Do you want to speak to that one, Brian?
Yes, so we, we have a very active PTO, we've been involved with the community. And last year, they came up with a challenge of hatchet chickens. Tractor Supply donated all the goodies and chickens and gave donated eggs for our, for our fourth grade breakfast. So we got this live, a little great partner.
Wrong ones!
We got live, then we got chickens. And we helped supply a bunch of chickens last year, one class per grade level. So a brilliant school-wide experience and just a total, a total blast. So they reached out to us, they said they had a chicken coop at the time. Jamie Barton, who's traveled the country and chased some chickens and had a, so we had a conversation about this. And said, could we do something to keep that going so that we don't have to send chickens back to the farm? Tractor Supply, so here, we've got a chicken coop for you. So we've got to meet with our science teachers and our crew to figure out just what that might look like. Peter Mora has been excited about it, excited but also nervous, maybe she will attract any of them. There are schools around the state, you can go to some that have program, you can keep the chickens around. And our intention would be that after we hatch them, that the kids, we can go a little bit further in the summer with the chickens. We're not looking for, for a two-year schedule.
You don't want, you don't want an egg stand out in front of the school?
I know.
Get us some revenue going.
You won't have to get donations for eggs anymore. Yeah. Well, I think that's amazing and thank you to Tractor Supply for the donation and the PTO for working hard to help acquire those things, anything we can do that's like that.
Special thanks to Rachel Torbride, she, I, she goes in dreams of having a chicken coop.
Yeah. Yes, she is. Thanks, Rachel. In case you didn't hear, Brian.
Make a motion to accept the donation of a chicken coop valued at five ninety-nine from Tractor Supply to support the district's science and agricultural program.
I'll second. All in favor? In unanimous.
Award of bid, student transportation.
Thank you, so the bid process has concluded for the proposed student transportation contract. Bids were sent to six vendors and only one submitted a bid. So this is for our bus contract. Five years ago, when we went out to bid, we only received two bids. This is a very difficult industry, it's hard to break into new territory and there's, it's a very difficult business, particularly from a staffing perspective. There's been a lot of, a lot of changes as far as union participation and with the, the, with the economy, inflation has affected wages. That's really affected our, the bus driver wages as well. Because it's not necessarily a desirable position, just because it's, it breaks up the day, it's only, you know, four hours a day. So we are recommending award of bid to First Student, who is our current provider, for a five-year contract.
Make a motion to award the student transportation bid to First Student for five-year contract beginning with fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
In unanimous. Okay, so we have a student matter and personnel and they'll be done in non-public. But before we go into non-public, we will talk about future meetings. The next school board meeting is October tenth. And the SAU twenty-one operations committee meeting is Wednesday, October eleventh. And the delegate assembly is Saturday, October fourteenth, all in the same week. And then we're gonna do a roll call to enter non-public under RSA ninety-one dot three two.
B, C, and M.
B, C, and M at six fifty-three P M.
Second.
So Christina made a motion?
I make that motion, yes, I didn't say that, but yes, I do, absolutely thank you.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And Patrick?
Yes.
You are in non-public, yes?